Do we have a timed window on this?
Okay, welcome everyone. I'm gonna call this February 26th, 2024, meeting of El Campo City Council. The order, this is a regular council meeting. We have a quorum as everyone is present. If you would stand for the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the city of El Campo. Thank you for the opportunity as council members to represent our citizens. Just pray, Lord, that you would give us guidance and help us to represent them as best we can, make the best decisions that we can tonight. We ask for your guidance and discernment in those decisions. Ask that you be with those who maybe are sick or suffering or grieving. Ask that you attend to them as only you can. Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I believe. Was there anyone that needed, wanted to make a comment? Okay, I'm gonna skip item four, the reading of item four then. Gonna go to item five one, the consent agenda. Approval of city council regular meeting minutes of February 12th, 2024. Someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion with approval of consent agenda?
Motion by Councilman Hodges, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Koberlins. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to items for individual considerations, six point one, resolution R 2024 dash oh nine, adopting the city of El Campo emergency medical services charity care policy.
Go ahead Garrett, the floor is yours.
Alright, so we've had the charity care policy in place for quite a few years now. Back when we were under Emergicon, it was based on the federal poverty level. Y'all had approved 200% federal, if they were below 200% federal, federal poverty level, we'd write off their bill as a charity account. And when we went to change healthcare, they had a different system in place. They had an automated system that would check their credit score and it, a lot of other things and determine their propensity to pay. Now that we went to EMSMC as our billing company, they don't have that automated system, so we have to go back to the manual process. So bringing it back to you for 100% write-off of 200% federal poverty level, or this time we're looking to add a 50% write-off if they make below 300% of the federal poverty level. Tongue twister. They still do get the bills, they'll still, all insurance will be maximized. Offered a payment plan, if all that fails in recouping any of the payment, then they'd have to provide proof that they qualify based on income statements, and then it'd be written off, and that qualifies those accounts to be sent to the ASPF funds that we try to get back some of that from Medicare every year. Any questions?
Questions for Garrett?
How, how do we determine what someone's income is? And where they fall into the poverty level and all that?
EMSMC made a form, well, they'll send it to them, they'll ask their monthly rent, their bills, they'll, you know, be asked to provide pay stubs, things like that, to determine if they're only making 20,000 a year, is 10,000 of that going to their utilities, and they'll take all of that and then compare it to the federal poverty level guidelines that change every year to see if they do meet those guidelines.
Who analyzes all of that?
It's all by the billing company, EMSMC.
It's what?
All done by the billing company, EMSMC.
And this Texas ambulance services supplemental payment program, where does that money come from?
That money comes from the federal government that gets passed down to the state government to distribute.
Okay.
Garrett, do you know how standard that what you're proposing is amongst other municipalities of our size?
Sure, very, very standard. I researched a few of the different ones before I prepared this one, and they range anywhere from 200% to 400% of the federal poverty level. A lot of them do do the breakdown of, as you go up, you get less of a discount like we're proposing here with the 300%, given the 50% discount. Majority of services, I don't, I don't know majority, there's a lot of services that do this just so we can get the, the charity care back from the state, because it's seen as these are accounts that are most likely not gonna be paid anyway, so why not try to write them off and get some money back from the government?
Thank you.
Someone like to make a motion?
May I move that we approve resolution R 2024 dash oh nine, adopting the city of El Campo emergency medical service charity care policy?
Motion by Councilman Koberlins, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Bustamante. Any more discussion? Any all in favor of approving the motion to approve resolution R 2024 dash oh nine? Please raise your right hand. Against, seven oh quarter. Thank you, Garrett. Brittany, would you adjust the thermostat, please? I'm kinda shivering up here. Thank you. Okay, item six point two, resolution R 2024 dash ten, authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, and authorizing the preparation of a preliminary official statement and notice of sale, and approving other matters incidental thereto sewer and road improvements.
And I'm gonna walk you through what we're requesting tonight, but before I do, let me introduce James Gilli, that's the city's council advisor. He's been with us for quite a while, I won't say how long. And Mr. Frelz is on the Zoom call, that is our bond counsel, who's been with us through at least 10 of the last 15 issuances. This issuance came out of the need to work on the sanitary sewer line on South Wharton. Many of you are aware that last month, we had a collapse in that line, and when we, we had a collapse in what was left of that line, and when we went back in to fix it, another collapse, then another collapse. The line is not salvageable as it exists. We cannot make emergency repairs to make that line, push the sanitary sewer down. So we had to order a bypass machine, they had to come in. This is very costly to your rate payers, and, but, but necessary because it was the only way we could, we could facilitate sanitary sewer services in the area. So we knew we had to go ahead and issue the debt for South Wharton's sanitary sewer. I signed an emergency order in the amount of 488,000 last week to bring in the pipes. You may have seen them come in this morning. We went ahead and authorized the, the pipe bursting on South Wharton. That, this is, this is, your toilet's not flushing, we had to call the plumber, okay? And we, it's time to call the plumber. So that's exactly what we did. So that's, that's South Wharton. Just to be honest with you, North Wharton is in as bad a shape, if not worse, shape than South Wharton. It's a matter of time before you get a collapse on that road too. And once that happens, guess what? We're back here asking you to issue the debt for that, because we don't have, we do have the reserves to cover this, but we wouldn't advise it because it would put you below your, below what you need to, to, in your financial policy to carry. We don't have the reserves for both to get to that point. So we're asking you first and foremost to authorize the debt, or the, the notice of intent to issue debt, which the, the sale will happen if, if approved in April, for the first two, which is the sanitary sewer improvements. While we were in there, issuing debt is a very expensive process. The issuance costs aren't cheap. We don't like to do back-to-back issuances, we want to avoid those, those issuance costs over and over again. So we added in Town and Country, because this project's been, been out there for decades. You guys know how bad it is when you drive down there after a rain. It floods, the whole area floods. But more importantly, in 2015, this DAS approved $220,000 towards engineering for that project, and somewhere along that process, in 2015, somebody pushed pause. The only logical reason was because they were scared of the cost. It's nine years later, and that cost hasn't gone down. In fact, the engineering's doubled from what it was in 2015, and the cost of the project has gone up substantially. We've reconfigured the project to save a little bit of money. It's not terrible amount, but what we're asking you to do is approve this project, because you already have 80,400 towards the engineering. You're getting that, the engineer, the engineer that's worked on this project is gonna credit you that, towards this project. I don't know if that deal will come again if you kick this can down the road. And I'm not trying to sell you a coupon for 80,400. I'm just telling you that this project was on the book. In 2021, I stood before you, some of you were on council in 2021, I know at least four, three of you were, and I presented a CIP. Town and Country was on that CIP. The year that Town and Country was on the CIP to be completed was in 2024, 2025, fiscal year 25. And so that's why this has been added on this list. I've been asked why Avenue C wasn't prioritized first. Number one, Avenue C wasn't prioritized in the 2021 presentation, but the main reason is because we have to finish West Norris first, before you can get to Avenue C. Plus, we don't have any engineering on it yet. We do on this particular project, we recognize that this Town and Country is gonna affect your tax rate. It's possible that you're looking at a tax increase from this, at least on your INS side you are, but that doesn't mean your overall rate will go up. Your seniors, they're over 65, their tax rate, their, their, their taxes are frozen, so they won't feel the hit on this. But it's possible that the little over two cents could affect your tax, your INS tax rate will, but it could be smoothed depending on what your MNO looks like, what sales tax does. I can't predict that for you. On the water and sewer, we will most certainly be asking you to increase rates. We'll be asking you to do it in April, around a dollar 25 a count, and we'll be asking you to do it again in October. But that's only to cover the debt service. You're lucky you have a lot of debt retiring and the sanitary sewer. Mr. Gilli can tell you about our debt capacity and whether we can financially afford to do this, that the information is included in your packet, where you can see what that modeling looks like. We included all of the models in there for you to see in an effort to be transparent, so you could see, see what your options are. But tonight is the first step, so this would be, you're setting a ceiling on how much you're gonna issue, and you're going ahead and letting the citizens know that you have, you're having a notice of intent to issue this debt, and it will be the first step, and quite a long process to get us these proceeds in May. And I will be happy to answer questions. Jonathan will be happy to take questions, and so will James, and Brittany is also in the audience, if you have any questions, as well as Jerry and Kevin regarding the projects themselves. If anyone wants to open the gates.
I will say that, as noted in the memo here, that the finance direct committee did meet last Wednesday, and we were all three in favor of the Wharton Street sewer line project. We just felt that it, it needs to be done, and it needs to be done at the same time. We were wanting more information on the Town and Country. That's a project that, it needs to be done. It's been, I'll never forget, I was, I was a city employee sitting on the back row, and I remember Councilman Ed Irwin sitting up here. He was emphatic that that needed to be done, and it may have been under his encouragement that we did the, got the engineering started. Then we, council paused it. The estimated cost came in, and council said, whoa.
Yeah, not ready for that yet.
So it's back before us again, council. Steve, were you gonna say something?
I just, I have a couple of questions. So North Wharton and South Wharton, will that, how, how would that impact any agreement with the state if it were to ever go forward? We're just gonna burst the, the lines currently in place, correct? But they want us to move those lines out. No.
The, the only line that we're prob, we will be moving is the water line in North Wharton, and we're, we're not addressing that here because it was, the cost was gonna send you way out of the, what was comfortable for us at this time. We felt like the water could wait, but the sewer will stay in place, and it won't affect their ability to redo that road, or widen it, and put in curb and gutter and sidewalks.
Okay, so it wouldn't be an expense that we wouldn't have to redo?
No.
Okay. And Town and Country, does that include drainage, sidewalks, road?
And do you mind coming to the mic?
And utilities?
Yes.
So answer all that is yes. The wa, the water line is more prevalent now, it's, it's an AC line that needs to be upsized and moved. The sanitary sewer has been done already, that's been done over the years through that system. Curb and gutter, definitely, there's no saving what's there, there's no saving the road that's there. And because of the great adjustments that are needed, going from a surface drain to a conduit drain, there's, there's a huge amount of different moving of the, the road elevations. So that's why that's all gotta be done. While we do that, we're also gonna be putting sidewalks.
And if I remember correctly, we, we did replace some of the, through pipe bursting, the sewer lines. It was tied to the Norris Street project, because there was an emergency situation that came, came about because of that. I know you don't have it on there. What, what was, or can you tell us what the water line was? I guess here's my thought.
It's AC, yes.
The, and the water line, no, on the water line on North Wharton, what was that cost?
Nearly 6 million.
So say it'd be another 6 million on top of us, so 15 million roughly plus interest. Okay. So my question there is, if we were to bring that to, if we were to approve this tonight, could we bring that to the state and say, we've made our commitment to Wharton Street, or at least North Wharton Street, we were gonna move the utilities, would that support us on getting them to rebuild that road like we agreed to six, seven, eight years? Or is that something that if we approve, we could go to the commissioners' court and ask our commissioners to help us, and the judge, and whoever else?
That would be great. The same, the same engineer that is building their road, that text out as at 100%, is also engineering our water and sewer, so there's no conflicts. That was, that was done by design to make sure that anything that they do drainage-wise does not conflict with the water and sanitary that we do during this project. Certainly could.
Are, are, I mean, doing the utilities as sort of like a collateral, for lack of a better word, or showing our initiative to, to, to get this road done may pay off. I know we've, we've been pushing, now we're politically pushing to try to get this project funded through the state, because it is not in their UTP. So we're asking them to go a different route to try to get this road improved, but I will, the water line will have to be moved before they do this work, so we would be coming in front of you with that, when they decide to do that, but we haven't seen it yet, if they do.
They were looking at different funding streams, starting in December, for different projects in the state of Texas outside of the maintenance budget of the Yokum district, which this project was almost half of their maintenance budget, so, which is why it keeps getting kicked down. So they're looking for other funding streams, and is it there? Sure. Will they get it? We don't know. Eventually, but not now.
So my understanding is this came out of nowhere, this collapse and everything, was this a surprise to the city?
No, it was not.
Okay, it's not a surprise, city, we spent $488,000 to flush the toilet, I guess, to get things?
That line services about 40% of the population of El Campo.
So in this, if I'm out of line to ask this question, is, do we have a lot of that infrastructure problem in El Campo?
We do, and we're addressing it through our pipe bursting program that we fund annually, as well as through grants. You have a $350,000 grant right now to replace some of those sanitary sewer lines, but we've, I've asked these gentlemen, and Jerry did a great job of reaching out to the engineers, and we're identifying every single old line, that maybe we need a schedule of debt issuance, but this is the first step. I mean, both of these lines are 60 years old, is that correct? And so, when we went in there with the camera, there's, there's not much of the line left. We could show you the video. The top of it is dirt, and so that's why you're seeing that. So I think we were hanging on as long as we could, and that's why. But the 488,000 actually allowed us to bring cameras to go through to make sure that we could pipe burst, and then it was bringing in some of the pipe, and it was just for a piece of it, not the whole thing. It was a, it was putting a Band-Aid on it.
Thousand feet or so.
Yeah.
Brittany?
It's about a thousand feet of the emergency that's going on now.
Oh, that, that's, that's what's critical here. We don't have a plan.
I agree with you. I mean, we talk about, you know, on one hand, we gotta put the water well, then we gotta do this, then we gotta do that, and we know with Avenue C, it's gotta be replaced before very long. We know that we gotta have a water line before long. It's pretty like, we need a utility and road plan, and need an understanding of when we're gonna fix these things, and how we're gonna do it, even if we can't do it immediately, if we're gonna issue bonds to pay for these things. I mean, if these are 40-year bonds for a 60-year sewer line, I mean.
No, these are 20-year notes.
These are 20. I thought I read it was 40. I misunderstood.
But we, we did present a plan to council in 2021, and it did include Avenue C, and Town and Country, and West Norris, and we have worked around those. These are just big projects that have to be funded through debt, and so we have to be strategic about how we do that, so that you, number one, avoid rate shock, but number two, you're not burdening your taxpayers. We recognize that this DAS does not want a large tax increase. We don't want that either. I'm a taxpayer just like you guys. I don't wanna see that, but, so we've been, we've been sensitive to that. I agree. This needs to be in front of you and in your face every year. We need to modify it annually, and we need to show you where we are on it. But we just received a comp plan grant for 206,000 that's gonna cost your taxpayers nothing, and in that grant, in that comp plan, will be a clear plan for some of these projects. And so you'll see real goals that will be, that will be used by us to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. We're ju, listen, lots of councils before you, and lots of city managers before me, didn't deal with these problems because they didn't want to see a tax increase, and they didn't wanna see a rate increase. And so they, I hate to use the phrase, but it, it's a good one, they kicked that can down the road, and so today, we're in the situation we're in, and so that's why I'm asking you to consider this tonight.
When I was on the comprehensive planning commission for a couple of years or more, it seems like, I kept raising my hand and said, we know we're gonna talk about how we're gonna pay for this stuff.
Sure.
And where's the plan for that? And we still don't have a plan for that, I don't believe.
That's a valid point, Mr. Hancock.
How much debt do we have that's retiring?
James, do you want us to pull that schedule up? It's on, we can get it on the screen, if you just go down another couple of slides. And I'm sorry, I'm going to punt straight to Mr. Gilli for some of these questions, if they're financially related, if you wanna scroll down. Yeah, keep going. Oh, y'all may not be able to see that one. You can, you can go, well, this includes everybody, if you can blow it up. Is that, can you see now? One or two? Okay. Yeah, there you go. You can see, you can see how the, how the proposed debt, well, the outstanding is in that column, so you can see what's rolling off on that. She's got her, she had her cursor on it, so you could see what was rolling off. That's, that's utility, utility debt right there. And then she goes over, you can see the tax debt.
So I was on that council. I was 15, 16, when we had somewhat of a plan. And I remember, and the exact, there was a, a council member that stated, we didn't get in this overnight, we're not gonna get out of it overnight. Well, that was about eight years ago. And at that time, there were 60 million dollars at least of water, sewer, road, drainage improvements needed. And I would say, I'd venture to guess, we have 100 million dollars worth of those improvements, and that was kind of where I was leading with earlier in our previous meeting. We have got to work and bring in a diversified tax base to help support this, so that it's not solely on the backs of the taxpayer. And one of the things that I'm concerned with is Town and Country. Those, that, those residents have been paying taxes for 30 years, and had the same problem for 30 years, but we've invested money into new projects that aren't providing the revenue to support themselves, much less build upon it.
Yeah, we have to balance growth with maintaining existing infrastructure.
So what do we think it would cost if we tried to add Avenue C to this, and why do we need to do Norris Street or any of that other stuff besides just Avenue C?
Kevin, I will ask you to address why West Norris needs to be completed prior to Avenue C's construction.
I probably should have been more prepared and brought you some slides, but on the phase three, which is the section that comes up to the five-way stop?
Right.
A lot of that infrastructure, utility-wise, has been done. However, there still needs to be some going down Avenue C, but at that five-way, that is incorporated into the phase three of West Norris. That is the jumping, jumping off point for the Avenue C, so that we can get that going as well. There's gonna be, have to be sidewalks, curb and gutter on that one as well, just like West Norris. And that entire section needs to be done, so that there's a seamless transition for those residents and people going.
It'd be nice and pretty, but do we need to do that to pave and gutter Avenue C?
I would say yes. It's, it would, it would help to keep all the drainage the way it needs to be, because there's, there's some deep conduits there that can be tied into, that would be a better way to get that stormwater off of the streets and into the gutters. And that, that just would make a better area for the residents walking along there, because a lot of the school kids do use that area to get up to that corner, where they eat. That was, that's their, their feeding frenzy.
They're walking up and down Avenue C all the time. They can walk up and down Norris Street all they want. We've got sidewalks there and everything else, but.
And this is just another way.
Everybody drives down that street, and I know y'all told me that there's a whole lot of traffic on that street, when you count the numbers, but it just seems to me like we could go ahead and, unless there's a subterranean drainage issue or something like that, but it looks to me like we could go ahead and pave that road. And this might be a good time to do it.
Definitely. There needs to be a little bit more, because the volatility of prices over the past two years is unpredictable. So I would really need to deep dive into it with some engineering. I can get started with that, get somebody with a 30% at least. That way, it gives us an opinion of probable costs. There does need to be a right turn lane on Avenue C, because a lot of that goes down West Norris. The sidewalk infrastructure, which is what we've, what we need there, will tie onto those new sidewalks going through town. It'll make a safe way for the kids to walk to their eateries and different areas.
Would property owners share any of that expense for curb and gutter?
We had that project slated for 2027, 2028, in the original comp, capital improvement plan we presented to council in 2021.
What do the rest of y'all think about that? I mean, we gotta do something with that street.
We agree. We just.
Might turn it back to gravel and start running a maintainer down it or something, but it's just about to that stage.
Well, my thought is, it's, it's a little more complicated than that, but I agree. So I, I think that we need to somehow convince the state to rebuild North 70, uh, North Wharton Street.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
I agree that we need to go from the five corners and go left to North Wharton with Avenue C. Put the infrastructure improvements, the drainage improvements. That would connect the middle school all the way to the railroad tracks. They could walk down, the kids could walk, or people could walk down those sidewalks. It'd also improve the drainage in that area. We could further look for grants to, to do sidewalks down Mechanic Street, I mean, Jackson Street as well. But I, I'm pushing for Town and Country, because it's been on the books. It's time for us, we've invested in fairways. We, we annex, not we, but the city annexed property, so that we would balance a budget one year, and then we're still paying part of that debt.
We are.
You know, we have got to invest in what is currently here, instead of investing in all the new stuff. We need new stuff, but it's gotta be able to pay for itself, so that it helps take care of this. So I support it. I, I wanna go Avenue C, I want Wharton Street. I'm gonna support this, because that's all we can do tonight, is support this, and then we could bring it back with Avenue C, and if we wanted to put water lines on Wharton Street.
We can definitely prioritize that, Mr. Hancock, so we can get probable costs, we just don't know.
You would need water and sewer replacement and rehabilitation on Avenue C.
Oh, do you? Okay, that's what I didn't know.
We would wanna do that while we're under construction.
Before.
Yeah, or, I'm sorry, right before, so you're not relaying the road.
Is the 3.5 million correct on there? Number three, I thought you'd said it was like 3.8 something.
I'm sorry, we changed these numbers on the fly.
I think it is 3.8.
It's 3.8. I apologize, but we have it correct in the NOI at your station, I think. Do we, do we include those? Your last scenario has the numbers accurately, scenario three. We were adding in the engineering. The ceiling of 8.565 will cover all three projects.
But I'm gonna add to Mr. Hancock's. We have to have, before we issue these bonds, we need a plan.
I agree.
We need to know what, if this is our first. We need to know what, if this is our first step, what's our second step, what's our third step, what's the plan?
It should be right past there.
Because then it's, we're just spending money. We spent money on Norris Street, but we didn't finish it. You know what? We've gotta have a plan, and we've gotta start somewhere. We're gonna have to rip the mannequins.
Uh, we included it in the packet. It's the first. We have three different engineers working on these projects. Uh, we, we believe in threading the, the pain, I guess. Uh, we have urban engineers on Wharton Street, Pape Dawson on North Wharton. And then we have, uh, Quiddity, because that's who was used and who we get the credit for on Town and Country. I think it's right past that, those schedules. I think it's first after that. There you are. If you scroll all the way down, you can see the price. Three-point-eight. You're right, Mayor. It's a, I'm sorry, we'll, uh, we'll correct that, but it is correct in the issuance costs. We ran those numbers. Let me make sure. Let me, let me make sure.
I couldn't understand the different, the three scenarios. I'm sorry.
We were trying to give you options in case, in case you chose not to issue a portion of it. So the first one, I believe, was, it, let me look at the packet. Did not include Town and Country. Scenario one was just, uh, water and sewer for Wharton Street. Scenario two was, um, I'm sorry, Scenario one also was water and sewer on Wharton Street, but also, uh, wa- was water and sewer on North Wharton Street and sanitary sewer on South Wharton, like Mr. Ward was suggesting. And then Scenario Two was just the sewer on both, and then Scenario Three included Town and Country.
I got it. Thank you.
So is the resolution correct?
I'm confirming. Yes.
So it's correct, is it?
Yes. The resolution will support all three.
Yeah, yeah, Marby, I like to make a motion.
And did I not see something about forty years? All right, come up with that.
I believe that the, sorry, I believe that the resolution contains language stating that the city could issue up to forty years. And I'll have to convert it to Mr. Frelz on this, but that's, um, that's just a, a maximum.
Yeah, James, James, with the document, the language in the resolution does allow both maximums of four years to get the, the both of our amount and the days that are in two days are both max.
So you did see that, Mr. Hancock, but our intent is twenty years after the numbers.
So what, what's the total of all three?
The, well, you've gotta factor in issuance costs. The total, the, the ceiling on all three, according to the NOI that we've put in front of you, is not to exceed eight million, five hundred and thir- five hundred and sixty-five thousand. The motion just needs you to approve the resolution.
Okay. Councilman Ward?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R twenty-two-four-dash-ten as presented.
Motion by Councilman Ward. There are second to that.
Mayor, I second the motion.
Second by Councilman Coenlance. Any discussion?
I just want it to be understood. I wanna see a preliminary plan before the actual issuance of this debt. I wanna know what we're gonna, how we're gonna continue. I don't expect it to be fully baked, but we need to have a plan on how we're going to start making progress.
Yes, sir.
Now, can we hear from the bond council what we think the interest in fees and all this is gonna cost for this thing?
You'd need to ask the financial advisor on the, uh, interest costs.
We currently estimate that the bigger interest costs for a twenty-year term beat, uh, just around three-point-seven percent. We, you know, that's of course subject to change. As, uh, as was said earlier in the meeting, um, based on the timing, we, our plan would be to sell, uh, at the second meeting in, in April. So we would take competitive bids in the morning, and so, you know, things can change between that now and then, but that's our current estimate.
Okay. Now, my other question is, uh, how are we gonna pay for it? How much is this gonna cost us each year?
Well, that, that's on the schedule that was in, in, in there.
I couldn't quite understand what our current cost was going to be versus what was gonna be retired from old bonds and all that.
Okay.
How much are we gonna have to increase the tax rate to pay for this?
The maximum you would increase the tax rate is between two to three cents.
Okay.
The maximum. That, that's assuming your sales tax doesn't go up. It's assuming, and, and sales tax is factored in, but, and he's factoring growth into here. And then on the, uh, water and sewer rates, obviously, you know, if we're gonna be issuing more debt, that could go up higher in the future. Right now, we're estimating a dollar twenty-five, uh, beginning in April. That's what we're gonna ask for. Uh, uh, at least on the residential side. It'll look a little higher on the commercial side. And then we're gonna be bringing you back another one in October. We're just, we're trying to spread that out, do it incrementally rather than take one big painful hit on that. But we will be having to raise quite a bit of money to support that debt payment for the utilities. It's harder on the utility side than it is the, the sales, uh, the ad valorem side.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R twenty-two-four-dash-ten. Authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation and authorizing the preparation of a preliminary official statement and notice of sale and approving other matters incidental thereto sewer and road improvements. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All against? Ananamous seven oh far. Town and Country's finally gonna get done.
I don't know if your citizens will thank you or hate you while that work's being done.
Certainly all needs to be done.
It's, it's a starting point.
Thank you, James. Safe travels.
One in particular?
Okay, moving on to item six-point-three. Request for supplemental demolition funds in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and forty-seven cents to complete the demo cases currently in process.
Well, we just like asking for money, don't we? It seems to be all we do these days, is come up for counsel and ask for some money. Crystal, I'll kinda let you give them the background on this one, uh, and hopefully be able to address any questions they may have.
Absolutely. Good evening. Uh, we are budgeted for fifteen thousand dollars in demolition costs. Additionally, we got thirty-three forty-yard, forty-yard roll-off dumpsters. Those are the really big construction ones, um, that are used for code enforcement and demolition-type properties. Uh, so we are slated to have utilized all fifteen thousand and the thirty dumpsters that were allotted, uh, for demolitions. We've been hitting those pretty hard this year, so we have about twenty-four on, uh, record with our court system currently. Uh, with what we have left, we'll be able to finish a total of twelve of those twenty-four. And we've calculated our average demolition costs, uh, in addition to what it would cost us to use additional forty-yard, forty-yard containers for the remainder of the demolitions to come up with this number. Uh, so we're not asking you to dedicate this amount to us. We're asking you to let us go over the fifteen thousand in an amount that does not exceed this estimated cost. Uh, there are a number of these that are on the list that won't get done this year. Uh, they will, based on the timing of how these cases go, will roll over to the fiscal year twenty-five, uh, budget. And if we have enough, we'll start with those. Uh, if we don't, we'll, essentially, at this point, we're not opening any more demolition cases, dangerous building cases, uh, anything that's very serious, um, due to this backlog and making sure we have enough funding to work through what we actually have. Um, at the fifteen thousand, it would probably take us about two to three years to finish the twenty-four that we have on the books. And so if you'll allow us to keep going this year, we can get a couple more of those done. Uh, and then what's left would roll over to your twenty-five fiscal year, and we'll start with those first, uh, before we open any new cases. I hope I explained that clearly. If not, uh, let me know. I'm here for any questions.
And on the, the attachment behind it lists all of the, the caseload, so you can see. We redacted the addresses, uh, for the purpose of privacy, but you can see what's on our list. And like she mentioned, obviously, our first priority is, our, our first pathway is that the owner pays for it to be torn down. Uh, that's, that would be ideal. Unfortunately, in some of these instances, it just falls on us. So we're looking for direction. Whether, do we hit pause and we come back at it till next year, or do we keep going?
But we do get a lien on the property.
Yes, sir.
Some of them are paying their demolition fees, uh, so we do in some cases get them resolved. But if they don't pay them, then we do file a lien.
We wanted to give you a worst-case scenario, not an optimistic, wait till the end of the year, just keep going, and then ask you for a budget amendment.
Or stop without you guys.
Or stop without you knowing.
Did you say what the average demolition cost was?
Ooh, let me see if my formula's in here. I think I have it on our spreadsheet. Our average demo is two dollars and thirty cents a square foot. Uh, that will go up if the lot needs to be cleared of debris like rubbish or trees, overgrown vines and such. Uh, it also goes up if the house is furnished, because that's more debris that's going to go into those dumpsters.
Personally, I'd like to give you all the money you need to get those ISOs out of our site.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Thirty-seven-seventy-three.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hancock, second by Councilman Hodges. To approve the request for supplemental demolition funds in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and forty-seven cents to complete the demo cases currently in process. Any discussion?
I do have one question. So you're not gonna take on complaints or anything that comes in now? So.
Not necessarily. So we will still take the complaint, and, and I'm talking specifically for dangerous buildings that need to be demoed. We're still, everything else is still in motion. But for new cases for this, we'll make a note of it, and we can start it. Uh, but we really, if we don't have the funds to demo it and we can't get a hold of the property owners, there's a lot of cases where we, we know that it's gonna be city demoed. And so those, we would probably put on hold until we know we have the funding to do it.
So, Ms. Moore, I would encourage you to come back when you need more money.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't stop because, I mean, it's, it's, it's the same thing with replacing water lines.
True.
If you stop, we're not, it's just gonna build back up, so continue moving forward.
Mind us a simple question. Do we do this demo in-house or is it hired out?
It's hired out. Uh, our public work staff, uh, is very supportive, and they help us as much as they can. But demolition is, is too much of us to ask of them. So we actually get, uh, bids from multiple local demo contractors and.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve? Please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item six-point-four, rescission of award for detention pond materials bid.
We're asking you to reject, is that the correct word, Ronnie? Reject the bids that you awarded last May.
Recind.
Rescind, rescind, rescind the award of the detention pond materials. And our intent will be to go back out there and try to sell those spoils.
I'm trying to understand. You had a reason in here of why it had to do with yardage. Where did I see that? I'm sorry.
You're trying to understand why we're requesting you make the rescission?
Oh, here we go. It could not be possible due to bid specifications lacking a minimum haul slash tonnage requirement. I'm trying to understand.
Kevin, do you wanna?
Yeah, the, the bid was awarded subject to us being able to reach an, an agreement, a, a acceptable agreement, if you will. We ran into a couple of problems, uh, getting there. One of the main ones was that, uh, we, we discovered that the bid specs, there was no provision in there that, uh, required a minimum amount that must be moved. So basically, not questioning the, the company's intent, but they could sit on it and not sell anything. And they would have the exclusive right to all the dirt, so we weren't gonna get anywhere as far as selling that property, uh, advantageously for the city. And we had some other, quite frankly, some legal issues that we couldn't get over the hurdle with, so. Our advice is to rescind it based upon the fact we couldn't reach an agree, an agreement, acceptable agreement, and go back out to bid, and that will clean up all those issues.
Understood. Thank you.
Does, does the motion, would it need to be stated just like it's worded on number four? Or do we say, need to say who's, whose agreement, who our agreement is with that we're rescinding?
I would prefer you to mention the, the, who it was awarded to that we're rescinding that.
Yeah, it's, she's gonna highlight it. Jonathan Kulak, President of Reusable Organic Energy.
Yeah, and, and the bid was actually submitted at, I think it was by the.
Reusable.
Reusable Organic Energy.
Right, so we, we don't really have to use his name as the president. We just need to use that.
So we need to use reusable organic energy?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
We've, we have exhausted every avenue to come to satisfactory and agreeable agreements, correct?
I, I, I believe, but, um, yeah, I mean, a, a lot of it was conversation both with me and with Kevin, so I believe we have. Do you agree, Kevin? Doesn't mean he, when we redo it, he can't bid it again. He might be the successful bidder again. We just don't.
We'll just have some more clarification within the bid process so that it's all there.
Mayor, I, I move to rescind the bid received by Reusable Organic Energy on May second, twenty-twenty-three.
And I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said this while I go ahead. Do you mind adding to that motion that based upon our inability to enter acceptable agreement?
Yep. Uh, Mayor, I move that we rescind the bid, uh, previously received on May second, twenty-twenty-three for reusable organic energy because, uh, the lease contract is not, oh, sorry.
Just say inability to reach.
Inability to agree on the contract terms.
Good work. On second.
Okay, okay, we had a motion by Councilman Barker, second by Councilman Ward. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to rescind the award for detention pond materials? Please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item six-point-five, Crisis Center request to waive park fees in an amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yes, um, I believe we have Ashley and Samantha in the audience with the Crisis Center. You are all aware of our partnership with the Crisis Center on an annual basis. Uh, they are holding their annual Light Up the Square event in El Campo. They alternate between Wharton and El Campo annually, and they've requested us waive the fees. A hundred dollars is, is the deposit, and, uh, the rental fee is seventy-five dollars. I do not have the authority to waive these fees, so I'm bringing it in front of you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Thirty-seven-sixty-nine.
Motion by Councilman Hancock. Is there a second?
Mr. Ward.
I'll try to preempt y'all, but you don't have to work to work for that.
Should've brought you up earlier on the agenda.
Thank you.
Second by Councilman Ward. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to waive, uh, the deposit and rental fee for the Crisis Center for their, what's that, what do you call it?
Light Up the Square.
Light Up the Square event. Oh. Please raise your right hand. Okay.
Ladies, we appreciate what the Crisis Center does.
We do.
Thank you so much.
Item six-point-six, Farmer's Market Fee Waiver Request.
This one's not as simple. But I will let Crystal, uh, walk you through this one. This is a, a request from a citizen, a prospective farmer's market coordinator, if you will.
All right, uh, good evening again. Uh, I'm bringing this request to you, uh, from a local resident who is looking to start a farmer's market in our downtown. Um, it would not be something that the city has to operate or fund or. It would not be something that the city has to operate or fund or manage in any way, um, in this organ, or this, this individual who'd like to try and start this, is looking to do first Saturdays of the month, starting next month, uh, in our downtown park, which is a hundred-dollar deposit, a seventy-five-dollar daily rental fee, and if any of the booths sell alcohol, they have to be TABC permitted, but we additionally charge another twenty-five dollars on top of that. And so, I'm bringing this to you on their behalf today, um, as part of our efforts to create more opportunities and events in our historic downtown area. And we would like to see if you would be willing to consider to waive these fees for this particular event.
Question? Is this organizer going to be charging fees of their vendors?
Would you like to answer that, Sterling? Uh, I'm gonna ask Sterling to join us, he is the resident that's gonna be looking to organize that, and he can speak more towards how you plan to organize it.
Basically, I would be charging the fee, but the fee would go towards scholarships for the El Campo High School for the kids. I'm helping out the community, to basically pay back to the community for whatever, uh, we make for the booth space. I won't be making things, so it'd be like nonprofit pretty much.
I mean, pretty much, or that is what it is?
Yes, that's what it is, it's nonprofit, yes, sir.
Do you have a 401(c) for, for the?
Sir?
Do you have the paperwork for the nonprofit?
I'm working on all that, I wanted to come ahead to y'all before, because I was hoping to get everything situated before the month of April, because that's when I wanted to start it. Because I attend a lot of other farmer's markets, uh, Gennado, Shiner, and I ask them how they run theirs, and I'm asking the city of El Campo to basically help with waiving the fee for the, uh, park, but in return, whatever the farmer's market makes, it's going back into the city and for the kids.
The farmer's markets don't have to be set up as a 401 necessarily to operate, uh, but I have provided him with information, uh, and direction to actually incorporate that way, if he likes, because they can, i- if they're successful enough with, with that and, and incorporating, then they can also add snap benefits for their merchants and families who may not be able to afford it could also receive those benefits too, so I would be able to provide him with some of that direction.
That just proves it's nonprofit.
Yes, it'll get there.
Could you do a public-private partnership?
Sir?
Could you do a public par, private partnership, whereas you're a partner with the city in hosting this, um, farmer's market or the Chamber of Commerce? And that would avoid the issue of the fees, possibly.
So, we can right now, we just wanna give it a try and see if we can make it work. It may or may not be successful, and we, we hope that it is. But until we really know how it's gonna start to flesh out, uh, it wouldn't make sense to put a contract on it just yet. Uh, but once we can see how it's operating, if it's working, um, what processes are being successful for him, then we can start to put that down into something that would be an agreement arrangement.
Well, the reason I ask is you know my stance.
Of course.
It's, it's hard for me to waive fees, if you waive fees for one, you have to waive fees for all, but if it's a public-private partnership, whether it's the city or the CDC, it's our part, I'm not the CDC, I'm sorry, the Chamber. We're already supporting the Chamber and we're the city, so you're working together. And I'm not looking for the city to run it, I'm not looking to take it away from you, I'm just looking for a simpler path.
I mean, I'd be happy to draft something, if, or if you have something you'd like to recommend, that would, um, I'd keep bringing that back.
No, I commend you for, for the attempt, and I think it's something that we definitely need, and to be quite frank, I think that's a responsibility of the Chamber of Commerce, but I commend you for, for taking this challenge. If there's a way that we can work with you, I'd like to do that. My only challenge is, is once again, it's the fees, it's hard to waive for one if you're gonna, you know, you'll have to waive for all.
Well, I believe, but I understand what you're coming from, and if it succeeds, I don't mind, I mean, it can pay for itself. But starting off, I've only gotten four vendors that's even asked and to come to El Campo, they're actually coming from out of El Campo, they're coming from Victoria. And I'm trying to work with some of the local farmers actually here too, in Glen Floor, which is Gunnerman Farms, to see if they could bring some, because they don't have their stand open no more, they only do wholesale. And I'm just lucky to be a neighbor of them, my grandparents are, so we're always getting fresh fruit and vegetables, and I'd rather live off their farm than, because we don't know everything the way everything's made these days.
Agreed.
You know, and that's, but then it's also benefiting the kids too, for scholarships.
Does Molly do that? That was part of her presentation, that she was gonna have a farmer's market, wasn't it?
She does, uh, I've actually spoken with, um, I've spoken with the lady that runs most of her events for her, they have a market, um, it's the second Saturday, but it's really more merchant geared for, it, it's turned out to be more vendor geared, like with crafts and, and goods, um, as opposed to the farm vegetables that this proposed idea is looking to, to bring.
I really just have one comment here, if we entertain this, I mean, what we really would like to have is that it's very busy and, 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 and it's great, but the burden of cleanup is gonna be on the city, am I correct?
I know, it would be the responsibility as, as part of your rental for the park, um, you're responsible for making sure that the park gets cleaned. We, um, we could charge a fee if we wanted just a deposit, and then that could roll over until the event ends, but that's part of the responsibility for the rental.
You know, personally, I don't see how we can waive the fees without a cosponsorship as Councilman Ward was.
That's why, it's about 401.
But, I'm trying to think of an example.
Hoping he had that.
We've partnered before with organizations, and I can't think of an example right now.
I bet Crystal can figure it out.
We can definitely consider it a partnership, um, I really wanted to make sure I didn't put any responsibility by the city, um, into the event, so that we could let it kind of become its own thing, but I'm happy to make it a partnership.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm with Mayor Barbie, I mean, I think it's a great, it's a great concept, it's a great idea. I commend you for that. You know, I, as I said, I think there's other entities that should be doing these things already, but, but we've gotta figure out a way that we can partner together is the best path to me, and I'm not trying to add responsibility, it can be as simple as, you know, it's, we're gonna, it's a trial period for so, X amount of months.
Exactly.
And the city's part of it, but we're not responsible for the cleanup or the maintenance, repairs, whatever. I mean, doesn't have to be complicated.
We can draft something.
Doesn't have to be complicated at all.
But if we can't come up with that agreement, I, I personally can't support it, and then I would recommend that you go to the Chamber of Commerce and ask them to partner with you, and then I think we could waive that, so I think what would be appropriate tonight is maybe to.
Kick it down the road?
Yeah, table this till next meeting, you know?
We can bring it back. With the way to partner with you.
I think you have the support of, of having a farmer's market, we just need to do it, maintain our level of, of commitment to our policies and procedures.
Yeah, 'cause the Chamber of Commerce was actually, I asked them first, and then they're like, I don't wanna step on nobody's toes, so if they had any contact with Crystal.
Appreciate that.
You go over there.
Here's our cell phone number.
So, I. I'll make a motion that we tabled, uh, the farmer's market fee waiver request, uh, and, and until further.
Okay.
Agreements or discussion?
You, you need it by April, is what you're saying anyway.
Yes, sir.
So, we have meetings in between now and then.
To the next meeting, say.
We need to postpone.
Oh, oh, to the next meeting, to the next meeting.
Okay, so you motioned that we postpone a decision.
Postpone.
Until the next meeting?
Yes, postpone to the next meeting, my apologies.
Okay.
Mayor, I second that.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Cope Lynch, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to postpone, uh, waiving farmer's market fees? Please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, I just found out that the guy I buy my tomatoes from isn't, isn't planting tomatoes this year, so.
Don't forget.
Is that Paul?
Don't forget your.
Paul's acting.
You get too old, yeah. Okay, item six point seven, appointment to fill an unexpired term on the Parks Recreation and Community Services Board.
We're gonna ask you to do some thinking, you've got, uh, a member of your Parks Recreational, Recreation Community Services Board that has, uh, moved out of town, and so is stepping down from this board, you have three applications, uh, which are in your packet, Savannah Stockton, Monica Reyna, and not the Monica Reyna that works for the city, and Alexis Turner.
Please move it.
Josh Reese, he has moved to Houston.
That's a tough call.
Let me do this, okay, well.
This Paul works for the LCA, right?
I guess the way we would do this is, uh, let somebody make a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Monica Reyna to fill out the unexpired term on Parks and Recreation and Community Service Board.
I second it.
Mr. Ward, seconded, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, motion by Councilman Cope Lynch, seconded by Councilman Ward, to appoint Monica Reyna to the unexpired term on Parks Recreation and Community Services Board. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Now for the city manager's report.
Just the thing standing between you and that door, so I'll be quick, uh, you may wanna drive by Friendship Park and check out the new playground, it's, uh, it's going up now, uh, it's looking really good, really proud, thank you again for your commitment to the kids in this town, you proved this in September, so nothing like installing a playground in February, when it'll get really well-used. And then we also have a new police car design, uh, if you haven't checked it out, you can go to the, uh, Facebook page of the El Campo Police Department and check that out, or call me and, uh, I'll get you a private showing of that, uh, police car, uh, but that's all I've got for you this evening.
You know, I've asked the chief if we can test drive it, and he hadn't said yes yet.
That's a no because of the insurance.
I would, I would. Absolutely no, absolutely no.
I bet he'd let you ride in the backseat.
Yeah, we don't wanna be in the backseat.
That concludes tonight's agenda, we're adjourned. All right.
Thank you all.
Seven oh four P.
Don't forget my phone, don't forget your phone.